and are signed in, so whenever you're ready. And then Deputy Clerk Fugie, just as soon as the mayor sets down the gavel, you can, before that, you can begin the meeting.
It is pressed.
Thank you.
All right. I call to order the meeting of the Common Council for Wednesday, February 17, 2021. Clerk?
Yes, all 12 are present, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum, and we will proceed. Please rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I'll turn things over to Alder LaFave for an invocation.
Take your seat.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder LaFave.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I would ask everyone to please just take a moment of silence, and let's think about what's happening with the pandemic. And let's say a silent prayer that we can get through this time. You know, I believe the light is coming at the end of the tunnel. It's there, and we just have to work together, and let's all come together. Let's stop the fighting. So let's just bow our heads a few minutes and just silently say whatever you want to, prayer, whatever you want to, to thank everybody who has worked hard on what's happening, and that we can get through this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alder. On to approval of the minutes.
Come both.
Okay, approve.
All right, we have a motion from Alder LaFave, seconded by Alder Scannell, to approve the minutes from the February 2, 2021, Common Council meeting. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any changes here? Right, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. On to report by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Alder Galvin cannot get into the Zoom meeting because the link is not working for him. Could somebody text him the link, please?
Um.
Perhaps so.
I'm muted in the house.
Yeah, I mean, the link from the packet is working.
It's, yeah, I'll, I'll, oh, tell him that. Okay, thanks. Sorry for interrupting.
No, no, no problem at all. Go on. Where, you are not muted right now?
A moment to just send, I can very quickly copy and paste and send it back to Alder Galvin. If you just want to give me a moment to do that.
No, it's good. Alder Stoyer? Could you just mute your microphone, please? We will stand informal here for a while until Alder Galvin gets in.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we take bets if he has a glass of milk with him?
Okay, Mayor, I did, I did send it to him again. Alder Dorf, if you would be so kind as to text Alder Galvin to tell him that I sent the link to his district email.
I'm here now.
Oh, oh, hello, Alder.
It's just, I don't know what's going on. Maybe it's my computer, I'm not a technical guy. But our system seems to be having hiccups for the last two years, three years since we got this new program. And my link today, when I opened it up, second meeting in a row where the link does not function, I've had to type it in, and I made a typo, and then I had to go back and examine it, and, you know, and I guess I should be here 15 minutes early and try all this stuff out, so I'm ready on time. But I'm still concerned that there's something going on here, so I apologize for my lightness. Thank you.
No problem. You didn't miss the report by the mayor, so.
The important part.
I can hear you. I'll jump into that. You know, we've got some important items to get to, so I'll make it, make it pretty brief here. But as you all know, we had an election yesterday, primary election for, for the spring. Things went very smoothly, so wanted to recognize Clerk Jeffries, Deputy Clerk Fugie, the entirety of the clerk staff, all of our poll workers who stepped up yet again to help us out and make sure that, that we had a successful election here in the city of Green Bay. So just wanted to, to recognize them. Thank the Alders. I know we had at least one, maybe a few more, who were also helping out at the polls yesterday. Very appreciative for all of the, all the assistance that went into making yesterday a successful election. Also wanted to, of course, touch on our Cooperative Governance Agreement that, that is on the agenda tonight between the city of Green Bay and the Oneida Nation. Wanted the public to know and the council to know that because of some input that we've received from, from Alders, given the fact that we are sort of double booked tonight with a county board meeting and a city council meeting, it'll be my recommendation to, to hold this item over until our next meeting. We'll have the opportunity to, to go through the document as we did at our finance committee meeting. We'll have the chance to discuss, you know, some important aspects of the agreement with the entirety of council tonight, but we'll be holding that over, at least that'll be my recommendation, until our, our next council meeting. But briefly, on the substance, you know, I, I believe strongly that this is a good agreement, a fair agreement. It's in the, it's in the interests of Green Bay citizens and taxpayers. I think it's also to the benefit of Oneida Nation and their members. Obviously, when you enter into a negotiation, there's give and take. Not one side gets everything that, that they're looking for, and that's definitely the case here. But what I would emphasize is that this has been a really mutually beneficial process, and I think a mutually beneficial agreement. And I, you know, just speaking from the city of Green Bay's perspective, it's been very valuable. I think I, I know that I've learned a lot from Chairman Hill, Vice Chairman Stevens, the entirety of the business committee at Oneida, and have just, you know, really found it to be a very enlightening and positive process. We are far stronger when we're working together, and that, that goes for Green Bay, for Brown County, for our surrounding municipalities, and certainly for the Oneida Nation. So I'm looking forward to going through this agreement, as I said, with the entirety of council, having some more discussions with the public. But as I said, I, I believe strongly in the, in the importance of moving forward with a cooperative governance agreement with the Oneida Nation, and I believe that, that this one is in the interests of our citizens and taxpayers and, and their members. Finally, I do want to, that was broken yesterday sadly by our Chief Andrew Smith. You know, this is something that I think we've been preparing for, for a while. I had an understanding of, of what his timeline roughly looked like, but just wanted to take a moment, and then I'll turn things over to the chief under announcements, for him to offer some of his thoughts. But just wanted to take a moment to thank him for his five years of service to the city of Green Bay. You know, I've been in office here almost a couple of years and have just really enjoyed working with him on, on a variety of initiatives. Particularly, though, in 2020, a very stressful experience, a challenging one, a very unexpected one, and I just can't think of a, a better chief for a mayor to go through that, that period of time with. So grateful to his wife, Susan, for lending him to the city of Green Bay for, for these five years, grateful to the, the whole family. So congratulations to Chief Smith on his retirement. We are certainly going to miss him. He's here for a few more months, of course, until May, but, but the city of Green Bay is going to miss him and, and really appreciates everything that he is and citizens. So with that, I will kick things over to Chief Smith under announcements, and then the, the rest of the council. Chief Smith?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, everybody, for your support. The City Council in Green Bay has been absolutely wonderful, especially the current crop of folks that we have in here have been super supportive of the department. I also want to thank Alder Dorf especially, because she was on the Police and Fire Commission when they selected me, so I assume I got her vote. I don't know that for sure, but I gotta believe that that's the case. And of course, the men and women of the Police Department and, and the community we serve, you know, that partnership is super important. So thank you all so much, and it's been, it's been an absolute pleasure. I've really, really enjoyed my time here in Green Bay, and I plan on staying right here in Green Bay and, you know, keeping my lawn nicely mowed and keeping Steve Green and his crew from writing citations in my yard, so.
All right. Thank you so much, Chief. Announcements from Alders.
Mayor?
Alder LaFave, go ahead.
Yes, being on the county board, I get the, the National Association of Counties, I get their magazine and their news, newspaper. And one article in the newspaper, I talked to our corporate counsel about it. It's about Indiana. They were able to, it was Aldi's, not Aldi's, Myers was asking for a dark store exemption. And actually, we cannot use them here in Wisconsin because their legislature, the way they set it up, it's not possible for these big corporations to take advantage of the dark store. So that's one thing I wanted to let you know. And then another one is, they also had a graph on property taxes. Who pays the property taxes? And I was really shocked. Do you know homeowners pay almost, just under 70% of all taxes? Homeowners and renters? Businesses are six, 26.8%, less than 30%. And then farmers are 3.1%, and forest owners are 1.1%. So the majority are the regular taxpayers, are paying, you know, mostly taxes. And it's our businesses and our farmers, and farmers right now, you know, are the big, really big corporations. So actually, it's kind of screwed, I think the wrong way, that we need to, to look at this. I thought everyone should know. I was really disappointed in seeing that, shocked, and I think this is something that we have to work on, because this isn't fair. And you know who's getting most of the benefits? It's not the ones who are paying the most taxes. So I just thought everyone should know. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to thank Chief Smith, hands down, for me personally, in my 18 years, the, the best chief I've had the pleasure of working with. So best of luck being a soccer dad. I know you had fun with that. And secondly, there was some sad news today, obviously, with the passing of Rush Limbaugh. And I just thought it was necessary to say, he was a great American, beloved by millions. I wanted to acknowledge his passing. Mega dittos and Godspeed, Rush.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Alder Scannell?
Thank you, I just wanted to do a quick shout out to Chief Smith. Thanks very much. It was very much appreciated. It was great working with you, a lot of community work together, and, and I believe I get to be, to help myself as the first Alder to have met Chief Smith, even before he was given the job. So I think his meeting with me was, was good luck, and, and that's what got him over the top, so thank you very much for all of your service.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? All right, with that, we'll move on.
Alder Stoyer?
Alder Stoyer.
Alder Stoyer, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what the other Alders said. Chief Smith was a fantastic chief, and any, anytime we had questions, whether he or his staff would help, they would chip in, chime in. And I've had many directives in my district, but throughout the city, and I just thank him wholeheartedly for, for just making our job a lot easier. And we will on grass. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to also say too about Chief Smith. He was really help, helpful with our neighborhood association out here with, we're having problems with the hunting and everything, and he right away got a meeting going together. This is a couple of years ago, and he's, he's been very helpful. I will say yes, I will miss him very much.
Thanks, Alder. All right, anybody else? All right, with that, we will move along to appointments. We just have one reappointment here. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to confirm our reappointment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that reappointment has been approved. Ordinance is second reading for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Second. We need to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
There's only one, I thought.
There's two?
No, there's two.
Oh, motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to suspend the rules and take up both items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Now motion to adopt.
Second. Give it to Ken.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by, is that Alder Dorf?
It could be Alder LaFave this time.
All right, Alder LaFave, to adopt items J1 and J2. Any discussion? We will use the board. Yeah, it looks like those are adopted 12-0. On to Finance Committee.
Approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens, to approve Report K, which is the report of the Finance Committee from the meeting on February 9, 2021. Items here to be handled separately?
Number four.
Number two.
Two and four.
Mayor, just a, a point of order. The email that Attorney Chavez sent out, was that related to item number three?
It was, yeah. I think it's probably best to just take three and, and four into closed session.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable taking them both. I just, I'm satisfied with the email. I just wasn't sure if that was the specific item, but why don't we take them both and then?
Okay, so two, three, and four. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and the report has been approved, with the exception of items two, three, and four. Your wishes on item two?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Weary, I believe.
Brunet.
Alder Brunet.
Mayor, I'd just like to request a board vote.
Okay.
That's all. I, I want to vote no, but I want it recorded. Thank you.
You bet. Any other comments on item two? All right, we will use the board. And that vote is nine to three. That item is approved. On to item three, your wishes.
Motion to approve. I thought we were taking three and four together.
We can take three and four into closed session together if, if council.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up items three and four in closed session.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take three and four up at the same time session. It's been seconded, it was made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Dorf. Alder Johnson, you have the language?
Sure. The committee may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 Subsection 1 Subsection G, Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The committee will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85 Subsection 2, Wisconsin statutes, to take action on items discussed in closed session, if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
I need to add a subsection to that, as is stated in number four. It's Subsection 1E, in addition to 1G that was stated from 19.85.
Very good. Thank you. So we do have that motion on suspension. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and then we will use the board on this vote to move into closed session itself. Clerk Jeffries? Just waiting on that roll call, Clerk Jeffries. Or Deputy Clerk Fugie?
Yeah, I apologize. I am not in civic clerk. I'm just doing the Zoom portion.
Some mic problems with Clerk Jeffries, but she is waiting on Alder Corpus Dax to record her vote.
I recorded it.
Okay. All right, and that is 11 to 1 to move into closed session. So we will just hold until everybody but council and several staff are enclosed.
Just a question, Mayor. Are we gonna maybe need Commander Warwick or Chief Smith? We're gonna keep one of them. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes.
Has anybody figured out how to turn themselves into a cat yet? I couldn't do it. I'm not smart enough.
Randy, why did the chicken cross the playground?
Because someone egged him on?
Close, to get to the other.
Get him to the other slide!
There we go. All right. I had to fill the gap. It was too quiet.
Everyone knows that one.
Lynn wins. Lynn wins.
Very slippery one.
Fill the gap.
And then, maybe?
One second. All right, we are back. So we had a motion by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stoyer, to return to an open session. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, we are back in open. On item three, Alder Johnson.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made to receive and place on file by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Gerlock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the item is received and placed on file. Item four.
Motion to hold until the next city council meeting?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell, to hold this item over until our next council meeting. Any discussion here? Hearing none. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that item will be held until our next meeting. Now we are on to improvement in services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, to approve Report L, which is a report of the Improvement in Services Committee from February 10, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
Mayor, if I could just be recorded as an abstention on item four, the applicant is a member of my executive committee.
Very well, that will be noted. Any items to be held separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Protection Policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. For M, which is the report of the Protection Policy Committee from the meeting on February 8, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Corpus, seconded by Alder Scannell, to approve Report N, Report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on February 8, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alder LaFave.
Number five.
Item five will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of item five. Your wishes on item five?
Yes, at the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Steyer.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell, the item was pulled by Alder LaFave, you have the floor, Alder?
Yes, at the, it was noted that, I mean, it was not properly noted for the public to weigh in, and so there's going to be a public hearing next month. Would that hold us up, instead of being approved tonight?
It's held anyway, we're holding it at planning because of the, because there wasn't a public notice.
Okay, all right, thanks, it was just a question, thank you.
Okay, so we are approving the request to hold over that item. We had a motion and a second, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? You guys have it, and that has been held over. For the Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to approve report O, which is reported to the Park Committee from the meeting on February ten twenty twenty one, any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? You guys have it, the report has been approved. Personnel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, to approve report P, which is reported Personnel Committee from the meeting on February nine twenty twenty one, any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? You guys have it, the report has been approved, receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer, to receive and place on file the municipal and building permit reports for January twenty twenty one, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those reports, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? You guys have it, the reports have been approved and received and placed on file. On to resolutions, here we will have, we have the ability, obviously, as we oftentimes do, to take these resolutions en masse, I would suggest maybe one through six unless there is an objection there.
I'd like to speak on number seven, or hold number seven, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules for, for items one through six.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up resolutions one through six with one roll call vote, motion was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? You guys have it, the rules are suspended, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolutions one through six.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens on resolutions one through six, and we will use the board. Clerk Jeffries, just in case you didn't catch this, Alder Vanderlyce did have to leave our meeting to go to the county board meeting. In case we're waiting on his vote.
It didn't come up, did it come up for anybody yet?
Nah, those are adopted, eleven oh.
Okay.
Happened somehow, I guess, huh? On to R seven, Alder Dorf?
Yeah, so I'd like to read a statement before I make a motion on that, and then we can have discussion. So this is something I've been really thinking about a lot over the past few weeks, months, and so I'm just going to read this statement that I worked on. The resolution regarding Green Bay area public schools in its original form was based on conjecture and unsupported by data. It was extensively amended to make it less offensive and insulting, and in the words of another Alder, the intent of the original resolution was basically watered down, so it means nothing. As it stands, the resolution now states, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Green Bay is in support of the Green Bay area public school district as it prepares to offer a safe in-person option of learning for students. On its surface, by voting yes on this resolution, I would appear to be supporting the Green Bay area public school district, and by voting no, it could be perceived that I'm not supporting the school district. There's another interpretation, however. I do not believe that this Green Bay City Council should interfere in any way with the decision making of another local elected body unless that body is acting in an egregious manner by refusing to act on a matter for which it is responsible. That is not the case with the issue of making a plan regarding the face-to-face reopening of Green Bay area public schools. There is a plan beginning seven school days from today. In the words of one of Alder Burnett's constituents who emailed all of us, quote, "You have no business passing any kind of resolution that concerns the Green Bay school district. You were elected to inspire garbage plowing and to be fiscally responsible when spending our tax dollars. No responsibility or obligation to share your opinion on school board proceedings. In my opinion, this resolution is not appropriate. This resolution addresses the topic that is not germane to the work of the Green Bay City Council. This resolution should not be before council, but unfortunately, here it is. I believe this resolution should be received and placed on file. If it is not, I see no viable option for myself other than to abstain from voting as I cannot in clear conscience vote either yes or no. I cannot in clear conclusion that I believe does not belong before this council. Therefore, my motion is, I move to receive and place on file."
Have a motion to receive and place on file, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Alder Galvin. Alder Scannell is in the queue.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to reiterate that this resolution is like no other resolution we have done. Other resolutions were to like the county or the state, they are to governing bodies that are similar to ourselves, we're all part of the same governing pie, we just have different slices of jurisdiction. The school actually used to be part of the school, of the city governance. In the nineties, it was, that relationship was severed and it became completely separate, it's its own pie, it's blueberry pie and, and we're banana cream with nuts on top. So I think we should really honor that separation. Furthermore, this resolution, unlike all the other resolutions, is a controversial one. There was no controversy about those tars polluting our environment, or dark stores, sappiness of our tax base revenue. This is choosing sides. There are a group of people who feel the schools should have been opened yesterday, and there are people who wish the schools could have been opened yesterday, but they did support the school board and not opening them at the time. So we are asking to, we're being thrown in the middle of a controversial issue and I, I really hesitate to be on either side of that. It's been mentioned that a couple of times that the information that a lot of people, Alders are using is false. I'd like to see a show of hands of, who knows what Third Friday Count is? Is anybody aware of what Third Friday Count is?
I know Fish Fry Friday.
Nope.
Is that not it?
And that just goes to show, I mean, the number that was tossed around for loss of enrolled students, taken from Third Friday Counts, which has nothing to do with enrollment, it has to do with attendance. And I won't go into what Third Friday Count, you know, the purpose of Third Friday Count, I don't have the time for that, but to extrapolate from that information that students are not enrolled in the Green Bay schools is completely inappropriate and inaccurate. And those Third Friday Counts are, a kid has a sniffle and is not attending school that day, and he just wants to stay in bed and, and bring plenty of food, get some sleep and read some comic books, if they still do that these days, and we have him shipped off to Timbuktu. I mean, you cannot say that attendance is enrollment, it's just inaccurate, we lack the expertise to deal with some of the information we are giving here, and I don't think we have enough of that information. So we would, to really make a sound decision here, we would have to put on school board member hats and have a lot more information and have to know how to interpret it accurately, and we just don't have that. So since this is not a typical resolution, we don't have all the data we need, we don't have the background for it, I feel very uncomfortable getting involved in this in any size, shape or form, and I think the only thing we can really say about this year as far as education, it's been a messed up year. This pandemic has been awful in so many ways, and in education, it's a messed up year. Going back to school, it's still going to be a messed up year, I mean, just a cursory reading of what's going on out there, I mean, there are districts that have opened up and they've had situations where students were, came, were infected, and so they had to be isolated, so you have these big rooms of all kinds of different students, different grades, levels, different activities, all in one room, that's not optimal for education. You had problems with not a teacher skinny sick and not having enough subs, so students are placed into other classrooms, you have great classroom sizes. I know of an elementary child who, with a, their teacher over internet saying, oh, you know, couldn't wait to get back, and first thing she wants to do is give her a big hug, and the teacher said, well, we won't be able to do that, and the kid cried. I mean, there's not going to be any hugging, any high fives, any pats on the backs between teachers and students, between students and students. This is going to be a messed up year, no matter what happens, and for us to get involved in this at all, I feel very, I don't want to do that, I don't want to get involved in this. So I, when this first came out, my initial reaction was to be against it, then I was hoping, I thought, paused and said, is there some way I could get on board with this? Because I recognize that there are a lot of people out there suffering, and as a city Alder, this has been a very frustrating time. This pandemic has been awful, and anything I can do to help ease the pain or the suffering someone's going through, I want to do it. And if there's some way I could help with a group of people and feel better, I was willing to bend over backwards and try and do it, but I, I just don't see how I can, I can do this, and I'm very sorry for the people who are suffering out there, and I would just also like to add, for Alders, I think it's very appropriate, if Alders want to get involved in this on their own, you know, on social media, letters to the editor, whatever, stand in a soapbox for the foghorn, go to rallies, that's certainly their prerogative, and I don't have a problem with Alder bringing this forward to the council to consider, I don't think that's inappropriate, but I do think it's inappropriate for this body to get involved in this, and I certainly don't want to do it, so I will not be supporting it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
It's Alder, yes, Alder LaFave.
I'm going to have to leave because, for the meeting coming up, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you everyone, good night.
Mayor.
Yes, who is seeking recognition?
Alder Burnett.
Alder Burnett, go ahead.
David Alderman, thank you. On the resolution, I'm against the receiving place on file, we removed a lot of the controversial or what be considered controversial or conjecture, there's a vote of twelve to zero to advance it to this stage. The school board take a decision, and, and within a few weeks, schoolchildren in the Green Bay school district will be returning in-person instruction, or at least as an option. A little surprise, I'll be honest with you, because we removed all the conjecture or controversial parts, I was willing to bring forward a motion to amend the title, because the title was the only thing that really remained that was controversial, and I'm very happy to do that. If you look at the actual resolution, aside from the controversy of whether or not we should even be bringing it up with past twelve to zero to advance it to this stage, there's really nothing, aside from perhaps the title, that's controversial. If I amend the title and remove teachers, parents, employees and school board and just simply say we support the Green Bay area public school district in offering a safe in-person option, I don't know what is so much of a hangup about that, but I guess the question, for Attorney Chavez or you as chairman, what takes precedent, a motion to amend the resolution or a motion to receive and place on file?
Attorney Chavez?
I do not have my book in front of me, and take precedence, receive and place on file, I think needs to be dealt with before you can do an amendment to it.
All right, thank you, Attorney Chavez, I'm against the receiving place on file, and I had some email conversations with a few Alders, tried to avoid the walking quorum thing, as I always do, but I think I have a title change to the resolution. Within, when you look at this, it is absolutely nothing controversial above the text, so I would be against the receiving place of file, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments on the motion, Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm also against the receiving place on file, particularly recognizing Alder Burnett's willingness to offer an amendment, at least to remove any piece that might be controversial. I think I stated my position quite thoroughly at the last meeting, it seems that most of the opposition focuses around how the city council lacks jurisdiction on this issue, and while we may lack jurisdiction, I do not believe, nor do I support, that we lack the ability to have an opinion about something that so emphatically affects our community. And from a civics perspective, I think this is what governments do, this is how we communicate to one another. I appreciate Alder Scannell's point about how this may seem to break the mold a little bit, I'm not so sure that it does, I think the issue does, is that we've never dealt with an issue quite exactly like this one, but we've dealt, quite frankly, with other issues in break the mold. And so I would oppose a vote to receive and place on file because I do want to, I do want to have the opportunity to vote and support this resolution, to not only communicate to our community but to our school board, that after the removal of the language that was controversial, that we do support their decision that they've already made, because I do think it is important for us to find a way for our kids who are suffering to have an opportunity to sort of ease that, that suffering and pain that some of those families are feeling, and I think it creates an opportunity, a decision that the school board has already made, you know, for them to, I guess, have that outlet, but more importantly for us as a, as another governmental body to say, you know, we support what you're doing, we recognize what you're doing is hard work, and quite frankly, I wouldn't want to be on the school board right now, those are some tough decisions, and I respect, I absolutely respect the hell out of what those, what they're doing right now and the challenges that they have to deal with and the work that they've put in, and I want to have the opportunity to tell them that I do appreciate that, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder, Alder Gerlock?
I so wanted to have a compromise, and, you know, because we passed this unanimously last time as it was amended, I so wanted to just be able to go ahead with this, and I really want to work with Alder Burnett instead of against him, I appreciate that he's willing to change the title. But still, it still subtly indicates that our preference is a safe in-person learning option, which suggests that we, as the council, ought to have a preference, and I would have to defer to what Alder Scannell said, we really have no right to express a preference about how learning should be delivered in the Green Bay public schools. I, you know, I would just love to be able to say, yes, change the title, take out the word urge and all that sort of thing, and I'll be happy with it, but I've listened to what Alder Scannell and Alder Dorf had to say, and I have to agree, if we really are going to stay within our lane and do what's right, the right thing is with this, and I say that with all respect to Alder Burnett and all the work he's put in and his willingness to compromise.
Thanks, Alder, Alder Scannell for a second time?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to emphasize the divisiveness. I think if we had a divisive issue that we were dealing with and another governing body was. was digging their, sipping their toes into it, uh, using data without really understanding it, and creating, I think we've already done some damage through our discussion. I mean, we had, last time, we had an alder shouting out, uh, tamper to, uh, board members. I think that's, that's not what our business should be about. We should not be campaigning for other people and for city business. So that just goes to show how inappropriate we are here. We are, we should not be taking up this issue because it is divisive. This isn't, this isn't us cooperating or helping or being, uh, useful to another governing body. They've not come to us for any help. This is us taking a side and being, playing part of that divisive role. Uh, and I, I just regret that we've done that. And I'm just very hesitant about getting any further mixed up in it. Uh, I appreciate what Alder Brunet is, I, I appreciate him from the beginning when I disagreed with it. You know, there are, uh, people out there suffering and what can we do to help? You know, it, it has been frustrating. We want to help. We want to be involved in, in, been able to do a lot. And there's been a lot that's been out there to, to do, but it's just beyond our, our capability. And I think us getting involved in this issue is, is just a huge mistake. It's a divisive issue, even now with the school board. Even, it's still a divisive issue. And, uh, and the teachers and their parents, uh, there's still a divisive issue. And I just don't want to get involved in that divisiveness. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments?
You.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, now we had made some, some reality to have, uh, you know, a decision that was 12-0 last week, uh, that really all the, the giving had been from one side. And, uh, we had kind of come to a consensus. And, uh, I think we should have done that tonight, not receive it, place it on file. Uh, I think it's already had an effect on, on the board, positive effect. And, uh, we see their plan coming forward. I have no problem voting on this tonight. And yeah, I think Andrew Beck and Rhonda Sitnickow did a wonderful job.
Point of order. Point of order.
Oh, Randy, you're funny.
Well, it's not appropriate. I mean, our, our business is not to campaign for other people.
I'm not campaigning. I'm congratulating them.
You said last time you hope they got reelected. That's what you said last time.
I hope they do get reelected.
Well, that's not something.
I don't care what you like or don't, Randy.
I'm talking, this is a point of order that should be ruled upon. That's all.
Yeah, the alder has, uh, has requested, uh, called for a point of order. Um, I, I don't know that there's anything, you know, within our, our rules that, that prevents Alder Weary from making a statement like that. Um, but I think it's, it's important to keep in mind that, uh, that obviously the business of governing and the business of campaigning should be kept, um, separate.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Randy just liked to interrupt me. So I'm done.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I listened at our last council meeting and I, I think everybody, uh, had something good and positive to add to this discussion. It's made me think. Um, I agree with Alder Johnson. We have to be concerned as a community about our schools. Because poor schools reflects poorly on the city. And it can affect the city in the long run. At the same time, um, I am hesitant and I've been, I think, pretty vocal about it. Uh, my position is that I don't think we should be dictating to the school board how to conduct business with the school board. Uh, and in so much as we bear no responsibility for the decisions that we're trying to get them to make, uh, we bear nothing if they make the wrong decisions based on the pressure that we put on them. Um, and we're not, if, if, if we're concerned about depression and children that are not doing well scholastically, where was all the concern before schools closed down with the 800 to 1,000 children that are homeless every night that attend Green Bay schools? Where was the concern about the depression suffered by children that have to go to school? Suicidal ideation and the ones that have attempted and have committed suicide? Where, where, where was the concern and, and the resolutions coming from this body to tell the school to do a better job? When Washington Middle School was in all the papers and the news for weeks on end about discipline issues and teachers that didn't want to work there, where was the concern in the resolutions then? Now suddenly we are, and I think, uh, Alder Scannell's correct, we're taking sides here with a group of parents that want schools open. I, I don't know anybody that doesn't want schools open, but I think a majority of people want schools open safely. And with all our concern about this resolution, what happens? Although, we have another vote about, uh, masking in this community and three of our alders vote against it. When, when part of attending school, the CDC, you must mask. You must maintain distance. You must have ventilation improvements. You must have so many other things in place. And we have alders that get up and they demand that, that we have to have this resolution. And then they turn right around and they spit on it and say, we don't want masks in our community. And, and I, and I have, I have a real concern about that kind of situation. So, and I was one of the ones that voted, uh, last time. I mean, all 12 of us voted in favor of it. But I, as I've thought about it and I've received more emails and comments from people, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any final comments on the motion to receive and place on file?
I do, Mayor.
Alder Brunet?
Yeah, regarding the, you know, face mask, the, the schools, just like any business, regardless of city, Green Bay ordinance, going to, you know, require face masks anyways. And not only that, but the state, the, the governor Evers put something in place to require face coverings on the state level. That was my concern, is that we're going to have a cherry pick ordinances across multiple municipalities. The, the governor's action eliminated that. How we have a statewide mandate yet again. Regardless of that, the school would have, uh, required them and that I was in support of that. Who wouldn't be in support of that? Uh, I just had issues with the ordinance as presented for reasons I stated, which I think were good reasons. Regarding the, the resolution, you gotta really read it. There, I'm telling you folks, I appreciate that I, I willingly amended the ordinance last time to remove anything that could be considered conjecture or, uh, controversial. The only thing that remained was the title. Idea that I had was, hopefully this motion fails, but we could go to a resolution in sup- offering a safe in-person option of learning for students. Resolution in support of the Green Bay Area Public School District, that includes everyone, offering a safe in-person option of learning for students. Absolutely nothing controversial about this. If anything, it's the chance for this council to affirm our support of the school district. With the votes five-five and it, you know, loses, or six-four and it loses, we're basically saying that we don't support. But why are we relitigating this? We had such a good meeting, a 12-0 vote. It's really non-binding. So I firmly, strongly recommend you vote against it. It would be nice for this council to pass it with the amended title, with the amended body that has absolutely nothing. In fact, a couple of different times, it states that we're in support of the Green Bay Area Public School District in a very tough decision. That's something we all should be in agreement to. And it's a good chance for us to do that. After a pretty rough meeting the last couple of weeks ago, and then before that, the committee, that was controversial, that was perhaps City of Green Bay had, it's not its best moment. We can make this a good moment by voting to affirm support of the Green Bay Area Public School District. Because they made, it made it, I watched those meetings. It was a very tough decision, a long meeting. I believe they made the right one. Some of you might not be. This just seems like, why are we doing this? 12 to zero, we removed all the controversial parts. I'm willing to amend the title to make even less controversial. To me, it's a pretty simple vote. Vote against or receive and place on file, then I can make a motion to change the title and we can pass that. I'm against the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments? Uh, Alder, Alder Dorf?
Yes. There's something called magical thinking, and that's where you kind of put yourself into a universe that doesn't really exist, a reality that doesn't really exist. In no reality was this, this resolution ever intended to support the Green Bay School Board. When this resolution came along, the intention of this resolution was to pressure the Green Bay School Board into opening quickly and safely. So to go back and to say now, this is just all about supporting the Green Bay School Board, I'm sorry. I just, I don't buy that. That's not what it's about. That's not what it was ever about. And in any case, this is not our role. So I will be voting yes to receive and place on file. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments? We will have a vote on receiving place on file.
Alder Gerlach, Alder Gerlach had her hand.
Alder Gerlach?
Just quickly, I want to say, um, I always appreciate listening to my, I've been away from Green Bay for such a long time. I need the context. I really appreciate the context, especially that Alder Galvin provided for this. It really helped me. Um, I, I'm sorry to say that I must agree with Alder Dorf. This is motivated by a divisive and loud issue that people have brought forward. It's not about support, at its, at its root, at its beginning, it was never about supporting the public schools. It was about catering to people who were, um, making a lot of noise and in a very oppositional frame. And I just, I mean, we just have to admit that. That's the truth. That's where it came from. It came from pressure from the outside to get us to step over the bounds and do what we should not do. Let's hold, let's hold it now and let's not step across that line.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments?
Quick one, quick one, Your Honor?
That's for a third time, Alder.
Last, last and quick done. You know, there's, talk about, it was mentioned how, uh, you know, we have an interest, vested interest as a city about our schools. But with this year, COVID-19 year, every school district, every school system is, it's, this is a messed up year. I, I don't think you can make any judgment or anybody, uh, can make any judgment about our city, about our school systems by going by, I did, it's messed up. And it's going to be messed up. And that's just not Green Bay schools. It's every school in, in the city, in the state, in the country, in the world, probably. Uh, so, uh, I don't see how we have any, uh, any kind of vested interest as a city in getting involved in this at all. I just feel very uncomfortable. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. All right. Seeing no final, uh, additional comments, we will move to a vote on the motion.
Use the board?
We can use the board. So the motion is to receive and place on file, um, item R7, And, that item ties five-five. I don't know how many, uh, ties, uh, Mayor Schmidt broke, um, but, uh-
Not as many.
I've been on the hook for quite a few of these. Um, I am going to vote against receiving and placing on file. But I do want to say that Dorf and Alder Gerlach characterize the origin story of this resolution is accurate. Um, I think it did start off as a very, very divisive topic. Um, the language needed some more. And I think the council, you know, did, did a lot of that work as a legislative body to improve the language. It sounds as if, and I'm, I'm going to hold Alder Brunet to his commitment to offer an amendment on the title, uh, of this resolution as well. Um, but I'd also like to echo what Alder Scannell said. Um, this is a really, really difficult year for teachers, for students, for everybody across, across the globe. Um, and that's true of anyone who's involved in public education or any form of education these days. Uh, my kids are in Green Bay Public School. My wife's a school teacher. Back to school. Um, but I think it's, it's really important also to keep in mind that some of those kids and some of those families who are struggling most are going to continue to struggle. Um, even the ones that are going back, as Alder Scannell said. But I think it's, it's even more important to note that the most, some of the most disadvantaged kids, um, whose families have been most directly impacted by COVID are going to stay virtual. And we know this based on the survey, um, that Green Bay Schools has done. Um, some of the most disadvantaged families, some of the most impacted will continue to be virtual. And so I think it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to figure out what we can do as a city, as city leaders, to support our public schools and to support our students, especially as we move into the summer months. Um, so that's something that I'm very committed to doing. I think it's important for us to send the message that school's not out for summer in, in 2021. School is going to be in for summer and, uh, and it's going to be vitally important that, uh, that the city does everything we can to support our students and teachers, uh, and everyone in Green Bay public schools. So I normally don't talk this much on, uh, on items on the floor. So I apologize, I apologize for doing that and I appreciate the leeway that's been granted. Um, but I do vote against the motion to receive and place on file. Uh, and I would recognize Alder Brunet, who I believe has an amendment.
Yeah, but, by the way, Mayor, well said. Uh, you know, you gave a perspective that many of us don't have. And, uh, that's really well appreciated. So I like to motion, uh, make a motion to amend the resolution. Uh, First Amendment in there together would be to, on the bottom of the page, the last whereas, remove the words beginning on March 29th, 2021. And also a resolution to strike the current title and change the title to resolution in support of the Green Bay Area Public School District, offering a safe in-person option of learning for students.
So we have an amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that amendment? Alder Gerlach on, on the amendment? Or Alder Johnson?
On the amendment.
Okay, Ald, Alder Gerlach, go ahead.
Uh, and tell me if this is appropriate. Could I ask for a friendly amendment of the amendment?
Uh, you can certainly state it.
Okay. Uh, after all the discussion, Alder Brunet, what I would like to suggest is that we, we say this, just for the title. I, I agree with removing the date. Resolution in support of the Green Bay Area Public School Board, as it makes during the pandemic. We give them our support, but we don't tell them what kind of decisions we're supporting.
I think with all due respect, Alder Gerlach, I just, I just think we got to throw support between the school board and the parents of the team. Like my resolution says, Green Bay Area Public School District, which is basically everyone, parents.
I'll go with the district. That's fine. But I would like you to just say, as it makes difficult decisions during the pandemic, which provides support, but does not suggest what kind of decisions we are supporting.
I mean, I guess it's up for a second. I won't second that just because I've given a lot of thought to the, the title and I think it's a good one that allows pretty vanilla, uh, outcomes.
I'll second that.
Point of order, Mayor. Can you do it?
Yeah, Alder Johnson.
Amendment?
Hmm?
That hasn't been voted on yet?
Yeah, you are able to amend an amendment. Um, I don't know if that was properly offered.
Well, I think a friendly amendment can only go forward if the amender approves of it, which he does not.
Right. Yeah. You, I don't know that there is such a thing, um, technically as a friendly amendment. Um, I know that you can amend an amendment. Attorney Chavez, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, there, you're correct. Um, friendly amendment is still just considered an amendment. It's just one that people don't dislike. Um, you can amend an amendment if you, with the order of, of how things go, um, I, I would consider, so this is- I would consider, so this is an amendment to, I would say that this, this one needs to be considered first, and then whether or not the amendment itself needs to be amended is a second one. So Alder Burnett should be taken into consideration first, and then if that one passes, then you can look at amending it a second time before it's gone to final approval.
Very good. That's helpful. So Alder Burnett's amendment has a second from Alder Johnson. I need further discussion on that amendment itself.
Can I hear that one more time, Alder Burnett?
First of all, that we removed the date because the school district, by the way, the date was added in error, which Alder Dorf and the mayor caught, it reflected in the agenda, so that, I don't know if we need to remove that, but we probably should, because it was in the published agenda. The title would be Resolution in Support of the Green Bay, Green Bay Area Public School District, Offering a Safe In-Person Option of Learning for Students. Basically mimics the very bottom of the resolution. It's just almost verbatim. So it already, it reiterates what has already been stated in the body of the resolution.
Okay, so we have an amendment and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay?
I've seen.
The ayes have it, and the amendment is adopted. Alder Gerlach?
Oh, I withdraw my amendment.
No, you could add your amendment.
It's, it's okay to withdraw. Any other comments? We will-
A motion to approve as amended, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I was, it's been a long meeting, so I'm struggling here a little bit to figure out what the motion is.
Motion is approved as amended?
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and then we'll use the board on, on adoption, because it is a resolution.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Alder Stoyer, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to piggyback on what Alder Scannell said. You were talking about reaching out, doing things for the district and that, and in my own little way, I'm teaching a class over at Elmore School, virtually, on geography and history, and I, I'm enjoying it, but I, all I'm saying is that we all can ship in in some way to make it a little self. I appreciate your comment that way, and I've taken it to heart. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for doing that, Alder. Alder Scannell? That is adopted 6 to 2 with two abstentions. On to ordinance's first reading.
Motion to advance.
Do we get a second there?
Second.
Oh. A motion to advance made by, actually, we'll do-
A motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, suspend, yeah. Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Weary. To suspend these rules, the rules and take up these items with one roll called vote. All in favor of the motion, please second by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to advance. Second.
Motion by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary to advance. Items S1, S2, and S3 to a final reading. All in favor, please second by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? The ayes have it, and they have been advanced to final adoption. Petitions and communications. Alder Galvin?
I believe this is to personnel, to discuss and evaluate the expiration date for the city's policy on COVID-19 paid sick leave for each employee group as the COVID-19 vaccine becomes available to city employees.
Thank you, Alder. Entertaining a motion.
Motion to refer with a shout out to Alder Weary for getting it in so we don't have to pay for it.
Welcome, Randy.
Motion to refer made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Weary, referring all petitions and communications to proper authority. All in favor of the motion, please second by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, petitions and communications have been referred. Adjournment.
Motion is adjourned.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. All in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.